It's six o'clock and we need to call the meeting to order.
Hi, Sheriff.
Didn't mean to interrupt, but we need to get started. Invocations, Cindy.
Yes, all rise or you may remain seated. I'm going to invite Pastor Michael Carson to the microphone. He's from A&amp;E Church of Indiana. Thank you for coming and offering the invocation prayer. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. God, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity, for government to work. We thank you for everyone in here. Keep us, protect us, and guide us. In Jesus' name, thank God, amen.
Thank you. Kara, Councilman, could you lead us in pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, could you take role, please?
Councilman Collins?
Here.
Councilman Acord?
I'm here.
Councilman Roger Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Tony Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Matt Grekew?
Here.
Councilwoman Rudolph?
Here.
Councilwoman McKibben?
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders?
Here.
Councilman Nicklet?
Here.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to -- everybody had the minutes and I'm sure you've reviewed them. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes at the last meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Second, Mr. President.
We got a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disapproval? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Communication. We have a communication that is some paperwork that was lost in transfer from the county over here. It was filed timely and it's a CF-1 and the CF-1 reports are ones that have to do with tax abatements and they have to abide by certain rules and they have and they were filed timely. So everything is okay. One was co in engineering and the other is with Chrysler, the new Chrysler business work that they're doing. Are there any other communications from the council? We would entertain any communication from the public. Does anyone have anything to -- would you step forward, give us your name and address, please?
Hello, Diana Bond and I live at 512 Somerset Drive in Kokomo. I'm here as a follow-up to my visit a couple weeks ago concerning the fireworks here in Kokomo and the ongoing fireworks. And I think I have an additional supporter here tonight. I haven't let the matter drop yet. I'm still working on some issues, trying to figure out if I want to do a petition or I don't even -- I probably need to talk to Mr. King about do online petitions work or do you still do it the old-fashioned way with paper? Trying to gather support. I'm not trying to take people's fun away. I love a good firework show just as much as anybody else and my concern is the fact that the fireworks in my neighborhood have been going on since the first week in June and as of Saturday night were continuing. I didn't have any last night. I kept pretty good records on the nights that activity is occurring. And of course, you never know when it's going to happen. It's just, you know, blows you out of your seat when it happens. So I just, it was just, I'm here basically as an update to let you know I'm still working on that situation. I have typed up something that might evolve into a petition and I sent a copy to Kara as well as Jason for their review just this week. So they probably haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet. So it's just still in limbo right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other communications? Hearing none?
Please?
Please, step forward.
Good evening. My name is John Roberts and I live at 5813 Pesawal Court in Indian Heights. And I'm here to ask the honorable council members to do something about fireworks here in City of Kokomo. They're totally and completely out of control. And I have some information for you, sent to me from Representative Mike Kirikoff on two statutes that allow the city and the county to improve upon the state's fireworks ordinance. And if I'd like to give them to you if I could, please. The situation with fireworks in Kokomo, it's legal to have them. You fire, use fireworks every night of the year from 11:00 PM. It's remarkable how many people can spend so much money on such powerful fireworks as they have nowadays. These are not the fireworks that we are familiar with. These are light artillery shells. We had a explosion in the air, of course, above our community and you jump every time. Our dog jumps, but there's no warning when they come. It's as if these fireworks people, as if they're a puppeteer and we're the puppets and they have control over the neighborhood. There was one that went off a couple of afternoons ago at 3:00 in the afternoon and it was a boomer, a concussion fireworks. My wife, she thought there was an explosion. She was fully expecting the fire department to be coming right now. She made sense of it. It's just another fireworks. I have a niece who lives four blocks away from us and she works two jobs and she was resting and she thought it hit her house. That's how powerful these things are. And I'm sure that you all know this because we don't live in a vacuum. Everybody's experiencing the same thing and we're all wondering, how can this be? And that's why I'm here is to ask, how can this be? I posted on the community Facebook page that they can't be firing these things off in the city parks. And I contacted Park Supervisor Tori Rowe and he sent me some information and I posted that verbatim on the Facebook page and they still make plans and they still fire them off. They sneak over the park, fire them off all summer long, this whole summer. It's been going on since before Memorial Day. It went off last night after 10:00, a boomer. We jump, the dog jumps, the dog's with us the rest of the night in our bedroom and it's just, it's just out of control. It's lowering the quality of life in our wonderful community of Kokomo. And we're letting just a couple of people lasso us in and ruin our summer evenings. It's been going on eight weeks now. And I'm wondering, where's the limit? So I -- yes, please go.
I was just going to say, Mr. Roberts, do you have more? I mean, we will have to review what you've given us and see what can be done about it. It's a enforcement issue.
Just lightly, on this paper I gave you, in the top front page, section 10-5, B-2, let's go down to number two, municipality may adopt an ordinance concerning the use of consumer fireworks within the corporate limits of the municipality. And if you go down to C2, may not be more lenient than a rule adopted by the state. So you have authority to be more conservative than what the state is, which is, we in Indian Heights would certainly appreciate some boundaries and limits on fireworks. The people in Country Club Hills, where my daughter lives, would certainly appreciate it as her windows have been shaking and rattling all summer. And I have a friend in Terrace Meadows and they would appreciate it also. And I thank you for your time and I wish you all a wonderful, wonderful evening.
Mr. Roberts, just one comment. There is a time limit. I think we had the other woman brought that to our attention and I do know of that. And I can't remember, I think it goes to the 9th maybe of July. So there certainly is, there certainly is a timeframe that fireworks are legal. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah.
And certainly, I agree that there has been problem.
Yeah, I think it's legal currently from, I think it's 11:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, or 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night and--
I don't know specifically that. I know it's probably, anyway, I know there's a limit. There's a week or a little over a week that is supposed to be allowable and there's a time, but I can't tell you that now.
Okay.
The woman that just spoke before could probably give you a lot of information because she shared much. That's what she was referring to, but--
Wonderful.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Let us review it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any?
My name is Joe Wampler and in being full disclosure, I own a couple of fireworks stores here in Kokomo. We do have laws on the books that were written that do govern fireworks from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night. It is illegal to light off fireworks anywhere other than your private property. If you detonate a firework and any part of that firework lands anywhere other than on private property or permission, property of permission, that is against the law. My issue is this. I'm friends with a lot of the Kokomo police officers, as you know. I've spoke with them at length. If with you, this board, this council does have the right to restrict it further. What about enforcement? We just hired police officers, as many as you campaigned on, that we would increase our safety and our public officers. We did that. You guys did it in record time. That was phenomenal. Did we hire these officers for them to be going out and patrolling fireworks? Because I can tell you the last time that the previous council did this, when Greg Goodnight was the mayor and they banned him for a few days due to the drought and the county did not ban them. I can tell you that on the Saturday night that they were banned, and I can prove this if you'd like for it too, I got, we have the recording, there were 60 calls impending for fireworks when Officer 360 reported to the Kokomo Police Department to go to work at 10:00 PM and work his midnight shift. He said, "Kokomo, I will be en route to the firework call impending." Dispatch responded by saying, "Which of the 60 firework calls impending are you going to go to?" I ask you as taxpayers, do we want to go this far with this issue that we are sending police officers to respond to every firework complaint? How are we going to enforce it? I've talked to several police officers and I have one yet that did not agree that that would be a waste of their time. And furthermore, Mr. Rudolph can tell you as a retired police officer, just because you come and someone says your neighbor lit a firework, he's going to have to see them light the firework and order to enforce it. So if he goes up to a crowd of 30 people and there's a firework been detonated and he didn't see who lit it. So I would caution you on the enforcement of this, infringing on the rights of other people. I personally don't like hearing a dog bark. My wife has one because it was cheaper for me to allow her to get a dog than to get a divorce. I don't like hearing a dog bark. Someone moved into our addition, I live by Mr. Kirikoff, by the way, someone moved into our addition, their dog barks quite frequently. You know how many times I've ever called the armed authorities or the police? I turn the TV up, turn the fan on, and let their dog bark.
Thank you. Are there any other remarks?
Yeah, I can give you a remark.
My name is Rick Hartai and I live at 501 Brave Court in Indian Heights. So, good evening. The easiest way to enforce this wouldn't be to enforce it. It would be to get the information out. The way you reach everybody nowadays, social media. You don't go house to house with a letter. We have 1,700 homes in the Heights. We don't, 50 cents a stamp, you don't get to everybody, spend $800 just on postage. The way you reach people is information and that's through social media. So whatever the city can do to say, "Look, we have an ordinance on fireworks." We would appreciate everybody if they would pay their respects to their neighbors and their friends by being a little more respectful with how they handle fireworks. That's how you're going to reach it. That's how you're going to solve it. Information and reaching people through social media.
Thank you.
So if you guys have the ability to do that, put out some kind of a message. Doesn't cost anything, you sit behind a keyboard and do that. So I don't think as much as enforcement, you cannot have police officers out there enforcing every call when it comes to fireworks. But we can process information. We can get information out there and ask people to be more courteous and more respectful. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for your input.
Your honor.
Any other communication?
Can I say one more thing? We do, for those of you that don't know, we post the law frequently on Kokomo Scanner, which is our page, that makes people to know that it is illegal if you don't abide by the rules that are on the book. You're saying no. We do do that through social media with 76,000 followers. We post it several times, especially as it's closer and forward.
Thank you. We would like to hear from everybody and we have your information. We will consider that and look at it. So we have other business to attend to and I don't want to shut you off. So if you can make it as quick as possible.
I'm terribly sorry to interrupt you, but with the fireworks and the lack of enforcement or difficulty enforcing it, there's a quality of life issue here and if people can't enjoy their time in the city, it's, what do you do?
Well, I would share with you, all the council that I know are concerned about quality of life. So we will take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry Roach, 900 East Lordman Street. I've got a crippled brother-in-law. He calls me and lets me know where shots are fired. If I'm outside, I know the difference between fireworks and gunfire. I don't even call the law no more to report gunfire because it's useless, because they're running around listening to firecrackers go off like they was last night down on Jefferson Street. Shots fired ended up being firecrackers. Now, if I'd have been in that neighborhood, I could have called and said, "No, there's firecrackers." Because I was in the military. When I do hear gunshots, I still don't call.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or concerns? If not, we will move on. Do we have any committee reports from the council? Hearing none. I'd like to go to ordinance 6966. And Diane, would you read that by title only?
Ordinance 6966 is an ordinance amending an ordinance number 6279. As amended now, therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Kokomo, Indiana, that ordinance number 6279 is amended with all the subsequent amendments, is hereby amended as follows. It's a case, it's POA-Z-20. It's a petition requesting the City Plan Commission and recommended the Kokomo Common Council for a change in zone classification.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules in pass ordinance 6966 on first and second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass this on first and second reading. All of those, and are there any comments about that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Paul Wyman, on behalf of Old Hamey LLC, is requesting a change in zone classification from OC Office Commercial to R3 Medium Density Residential for property described as Lot 59 dot 497, containing 0.33 acres, more or less, at 503 West Sycamore Street, Kokomo, Indiana. This property was in foreclosure and a rundown property. It has been rehabbed to be a residential home. Therefore, the petitioners are asked for the change in zone classification. There is an interested party who wishes to purchase the property. Requested zone classification is compatible with the adjacent properties and according to the City of Kokomo zoning ordinance, R3 is considered an appropriate adjacent district within the area.
I'd entertain a motion to pass that, Cindy?
I do, yes. I didn't know Paul wanted to come up. Is that good enough?
We need to have a motion first.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass ordinance 69--
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Wyman, 1533 West Lincoln Road, Kokomo, Indiana. Cindy, thank you very much. This was a property that was zoned from residential at one time to an office commercial setting. It was used as a law firm for a long period of time and then it did go into foreclosure. My client purchased a property rehabbed it as a single-family home. It's absolutely beautiful now and there is a buyer for it and they would just like the opportunity to go back to residential zoning.
Cindy, question? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing that on first, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Diane, would you, we're ready for Resolution 2748. Would you please read that by title only?
Resolution 2748 is a special resolution of the common council of the City of Kokomo on an application of the Kokomo Housing Authority, RAD, authorizing certain actions and proceedings with the requisite to the financing of certain economic development facilities to be owned and operated by Kokomo Housing and RAD.
Mr. President, offering resolution number 2748. This is going to be a little lengthy, so bear with me. Whereas the City of Kokomo, Indiana is authorized to issue revenue bonds and lend the proceeds thereof to a developer for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, and equipping of said economic development facilities. And whereas a representative of KHARAD-1 LP, an Indiana limited partnership or other limited partnership and liability company to be formed by it, has advised the city that the borrower proposes that the city lend proceeds of an economic development financing to the borrower to provide a portion of the funds to pay the cost of acquisition, design, construction, renovation, improvement, and/or equipping of the existing apartment buildings located in the city consisting of Pine Valley Apartments, Civic Center Tower, Terrace Towers, Dunbar Court Townhouses, and certain functionally related improvements. Whereas the project will be owned and operated by the borrower for the use as a multifamily rental housing facility, the diversification of industry, retention of job opportunities, ten full-time employees to be retained, and the creation of approximately 57 full-time construction jobs during the renovation. The Kokomo Economic Development Commission has rendered its project report for the project regarding the financing and has said, and said report has been sent to the City of Kokomo. The commission adopted resolution on July 27, 2020, in which it has been transmitted to this common council. It is hereby found and determined that the issuance and sale of economic development revenue bonds of the city under the act in a principal amount not to exceed $22,500,000. All of the cost of the project, which may be financed under the act, will be permitted to be included as part of the bond issued to finance the project. This project creates $41 million worth of investment to help those most in need in our community with no cost or liability to the local taxpayers. In order to induce the borrower to proceed with acquisition, renovation, and equipping of this project, this common council hereby finds and determines that it will cause or be taken such actions pursuant to the act as may be required to implement the said foregoing All costs of the project will be permitted to be included as part of the bond. Mr. President, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2748.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution 2748. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Second.
Cindy. Cindy, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from the council?
Mr. President, I have a question for the HUD Director. Mr. Steele?
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority. Here's my question. I have read with great interest the details of this agreement and the statistics nationally on the number of them that have been done, which is really good. At national level, it's not that many. My question is this. It asks for specific agreements and requirements from the Housing Authority and joint partners that these renters and/or people who occupy the rentals have to live up to. It also says that it prohibits anyone from being excluded. Do those rules any different than what we have today? Are any of the rules that pertain to this agreement and RAD and Housing Authority and Development any different than the agreement and the rules that applicants have to live through today? Are they, any of them different?
Would you like me to state my name?
Yes.
Derek Steele, Executive Director of Kokomo Housing Authority. Personal residence is out in the county, 9180 East 200 South, Greentown. To say that, are any of the rules different? It's different by procedure. Currently, we're under public housing. All of our, all of these units under RAD-1 are under public housing and will be converted into a voucher program under a project-based voucher. Now, if the concern is, are any of the rules or regulations or obligations of the landlord or the Housing Authority in issuing the vouchers or the owners of the property, do the tenants receive any less protections? I can say emphatically, no. That being said, are there any different rules? Yes, it's a differing, it's a change from public housing to the project-based voucher and I'll defer to council or to even Mr. Martin about specifics, but I, to just ask, are there any changes? Yes, but none of the protections.
Specifically, if the person that is living and occupying in these units, okay, has violated the law, has not met the requirements or not sustained the requirements, do you still have the authority and the ability to evict them?
The Housing Authority has the authority and the ability to withdraw assistance if they violate Housing Authority regulations.
Even under this plan?
Yes.
Don't say it so automatically. I know that's an automatic answer, but I also know that the rules are different.
And if I, if I can, currently what we have is public housing and Section 8 vouchers. Public housing is housing owned by the Housing Authority and the assistance is provided directly to the tenants essentially. The tenants then will pay a rental amount determined by the Housing Authority on minimum rent up to approximately 30% of adjusted gross income and that payment goes directly to the Housing Authority. That's on the public housing side. On the Section 8 voucher side, we have tenants who receive a voucher from the Housing Authority. They then use that voucher to obtain housing from a private landlord. We then pay what is called a HAP and that's part of their rental assistance-- We then pay what is called a HAP, and that's part of their rental assistance goes directly to the landlord, then the tenant pays the landlord. Currently, with our Section 8 residents, we still maintain the authority to remove them if they are violating Housing Authority rules. We have a separate policy for Housing Authority versus Section 8, but we've actually been working over the last seven months, and I think actually before my tenure, working to make sure that those two policies, our ACOP and our admin plan, our housing and our voucher program, to make them mirror each other as much as possible under the federal regulations.
That's all I want to know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question? Hold on.
Oh, for me?
When you... All right. So when the conversion takes over and the tenants... You go to the tenants to move them out of said unit until the conversion is taking place. So you're moving them out, and you're going to put them somewhere else. Do they have the right to go back when it's done?
Absolutely.
Okay, no question.
They have the absolute right to return to their unit as long as it's within the same... So to give a example of our... One of our towers, if we start on the top floor and we move residents off that top floor to do the construction on the top floor, seventh floor, we'll move them as much as possible to within a unit in that same tower that's currently vacant, at our cost, no cost to the tenant. Upon completion of the seventh floor, that tenant has the right to return to the unit that they were at, and then we'll keep working down the tower at that point.
Okay. Now, I heard you say that it was a project-based voucher system for the Section 8, the new conversion, RAD conversion. What will you do with the low-income, the PBRAs? Are you still going to take care of them also?
We currently have multiple vouchers under our Section 8 program. Those will not change.
Okay.
So right now, we have over 700 vouchers within our Section 8 program. Those will still exist after the conversion. Those will not change under the conversion.
Okay.
I have a question. May I ask a question, President?
Go ahead.
For you, Mr. Steele. You said that you have 700 vouchers currently, right now, within just those four properties that you've mentioned?
No, no, no. Again, so we have public housing and our Section 8. Currently, in public housing, we have a little over 500 units. So in those four particular properties, I can't do the math this quickly, but we have approximately...
335.
What was it?
335.
335. We currently have 335 units in those four properties right now.
Okay. Out of those units right now, how many are occupied?
Unfortunately, I can't give you the exact answer. We've been working, prior to my tenure, to hold back some of those units during this timeframe since the CHAP was awarded back in 2018, so that when... And you're allowed, under the HUD regulations, to hold those in that admin hold or demo dispo hold for up to three years. So we are in the process of holding those units back so that when the construction, the conversion occurs, it creates as little disruption to 335 people as possible. We're creating fewer disruptive circumstances by withholding some of those units at this time.
Okay. Now, I have read in other cities... I'm sorry to come across like this, but I've read in other cities that the tower housing is kind of phasing out. Why would this be beneficial to our community to invest a substantial amount of money in towers that have been here for... How long? I mean, how long have they been here?
Substantial amounts of time. I'm not sure if... I'll let Mr. Martin speak to other cities versus us and why that would be beneficial.
Good evening. Tim Martin, Advanix Development Corporation, 1225 South Union Street, Kokomo, Indiana. The question you're asking about what's the feasibility of continuing to occupy towers or high-rise structures or multifamily mid-rises or single-family scattered sites or multifamily? Each of those is analyzed individually through market studies and underwriting at the HUD level before financing decisions are ever approved for a project. So without other places to house these families, if you were to say, okay, no more living in the tower, where would you put that 115 people from Civic Center in your community? The monies to build these properties are very limited, and we're leveraging these tax credits and bonds to maximize every dollar we can to make capital improvements to the tune of about $50,000 per unit in this transaction to extend the economic viability of the asset well beyond 20 years. There's also replacement housing factor that's put into the projects where, over the period of life, money is deposited on an annual basis of replacement reserves so that when things fail, they're able to be addressed at the property level, where now, in the public housing world, if they fail, you have to wait for HUD to provide additional funding.
Has the HUD appropriation of funds, has it substantially decreased in the last year? Two years? Three years?
If I could speak to this, I'm the Director of Operations for the Evansville Housing Authority. I've been there for 22 years. So beginning in 2003 with the publishing of the Harvard Study, subsidy at the national level for housing programs has declined, and it has continued to decline up until this administration. So we've had an anomaly for the past two and a half years in the budget cycle. We've actually received an increase in housing subsidy, but up until that time, it's decreased across the federal platform by more than 37%.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Has the properties that has been put in this Phase 1 project been evaluated? If so, what is your determination of what they will need?
So each of the properties were subject to a capital needs inspection or assessment, and out of that capital needs assessment, a scope of work was prepared for every property specifically. So some of the common items that you'll see occur through this renovation would include roofing where necessary, exterior doors and windows, siding where applicable, new electrical upgrades to make them code compliant, new safety systems in the high-rise towers, as an example, fire safety systems that are compliant with current code, as well as interior finishes, kitchen cabinets, countertops, sinks, flooring, windows, lighting, bathroom improvements, accessibility, visibility to meet UFOs requirements. All these things are being addressed through this renovation.
Have you... Let me rephrase that. Are you working or have you done this program in any other locations?
Four transactions, 888 units, and about $35 million worth of capital improvements.
In what cities?
Evansville.
Evansville? And how's that... Is everything going?
Everything's completed for the RAD conversions in Evansville. Those started in 2013 and concluded this in 2018.
Okay, this will ultimately take KH out, the Kokomo Housing Authority, out of business as far as...
Not at all.
How will it... I mean, when you eventually take over all of the properties, and then the Phase 2 comes in and the houses go, so then they won't have any... There won't be any need for... I mean, maybe an office person?
I think you're misunderstanding the word conversion. Conversion isn't the disposition. It isn't relinquishing ownership and control. It's simply converting the property from public housing to Section 8 multifamily housing. The Housing Authority will continue, and their co-developer in the project will continue to retain ownership through, in this case, a 99-year ground lease, which will stay on the property. HUD has a long-term use agreement for 40 or 20 years initially and another 20 years required by the Secretary, so that these properties remain public housing or Section 8 voucher-assisted properties in the future.
So you plan on retaining most of the employees from the Housing Authority? The maintenance guys and all the staff will still continue?
There's currently a staffing level, managers, maintenance, clerks that exist at the property. Post-conversion, there still will be that same organizational structure. Who ultimately has those positions is up to the Authority and those members to decide themselves.
So you, being a partner in this, you won't have the... You're saying that Kokomo Housing Authority will still maintain these buildings?
The Kokomo Housing Authority is a co-developer with Advanix Development Corporation through their nonprofit Superior Street Development Corp. So those decisions about staffing are made with the Housing Authority as a co-developer.
Okay, now, this is going to be a tough one for you, but I'm going to ask it out anyway. Are you a favorable or non-favorable to union workers?
I'm sorry?
Are you favorable or non-favorable to union workers?
Personally, I'm a journeyman, heavy equipment operator, served apprenticeship when I got out of the United States Marine Corps. I have a vested pension in Operators IUOE 181, Evansville.
Okay, has this finance plan been approved by HUD?
Not yet. Hasn't been submitted. This bond transaction is a part of that financing plan, so this is another step to getting into that approval process.
Will the... Will tax credits be used at the property after the RAD conversion?
Tax credits is one of the financing mechanisms associated with the rehab.
If they're going to be used for a for-profit owner, is this... Because I'm assuming this is going to be a for-profit...
No.
It'll still be a nonprofit?
Advanix Development Corporation is a nonprofit entity. We're a wholly-owned subsidiary of the Evansville Housing Authority. We operate as a development entity on behalf of EHA.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I would have...
Sorry.
I would have one question that I hope it's not a dumb question, but for some years, well, in 2012 or '13, Kokomo Housing Authority signed an energy performance contract for 20 years. Will that still be in effect?
One of the things that we'll have to do going through the conversion is address the EPC, Energy Performance Contract. There are two options that exist. One, retire the debt, or second, get HUD approval to continue the debt post-conversion. It would be our desire to satisfy the debt, so there's no ongoing obligation on these properties, other than the rehab, the cost of the rehab that's partially financed through a HUD loan.
Yes, I mean, I stand by Mr. Barton's statement there. There is a energy performance contract that does exist, and we are in the process of evaluating that at this point, and again, our preferred method would be to retire the loan.
Any other questions?
I do. Mr. Barton, I mean...
Yes, sir.
Could you explain the difference and let everyone know how the pilot program works and that we don't lose the tax basis off this program?
Okay. Currently, under state statute, the public housing authority pays payment in lieu of taxes. It's an amount that is based on cash receipts. It's a percentile of what's collected on an annual basis. That payment's made to the local municipality. That situation can continue post-conversion with that same pilot payment being made to the City of Kokomo. Sir?
If I understand that correctly, then if these units are rehabbed and they are being better utilized and have a greater occupancy, then the payment to the taxing body would be greater because the revenue would be greater.
Correct. It's per capita formula.
And then, as we spoke out there, you said you'd be updating the facility as far as Wi-Fi, ADL procedures, and just updating the models in general, everything?
Yes. So if I may speak to that, there are three separate levels of review that's conducted around a rehab of this nature, and they have to go... They have to do it directly with the funding streams that are being utilized. So at the state levels, tax credits have its own set of underwriting regulations and inspections requirements. So the property is analyzed, making sure it meets all the current code requirements from that perspective. Also, because HUD is involved, you have a HUD lending analysis that's conducted to make sure it's meeting all the same requirements at the federal level. And then also, on an annual level, from public housing from a subsidy basis, the units will continue to have... Be subject to an inspection and have to meet certain quality standards to be continued to operate as voucher units.
And the displacement that we spoke about, far as using one floor at a time when you begin to renovate? So could you explain that a little bit?
So the process of cataloging vacant units, we developed this in Evansville so that we would not have to move families outside of the property for a variety of reasons. One, logistically, where are you going to put them? There's not enough space to move that many families in a small area, especially a town the size of Kokomo. You can't displace that many families and find off-site housing that's suitable, meets HUD's requirements, and then be able to move them back. And it's also very disruptive, move people away from potentially where their kids go to school, from their family members and other people that they engage with on a daily basis. So by having vacant units at the property, it allows us to rehabilitate those vacant units first and move a family one time instead of moving them two times. So you minimize the disruption to their life size as well.
I mean, for me, I think just... I know it's a lengthy process, because you said it's been over two years. The biggest piece of me would have been brought in a little sooner, but I told you before, I know lots of people in Evansville, and I spoke to them about the program. I mean, the pros and cons on both sides. I mean, there are people who are for it, and there are some who say some different things about it, but I just want to get a clear understanding before I cast my vote and make sure I'm a good steward of what I was called to do as a councilman.
Certainly.
If you have a problem, ask my questions. Mr. Moore, when I called him, he'd have a problem. I talked to some other people down there, they'd have a problem, ask my questions. And that's what I need.
Thank you.
I would like to ask another question, and it goes to me, okay? Without judging what has happened in the past or any of that, if we got 335 units, how many are uninhabitable because of the condition that we want to get to? Okay? Is it... Do we have a third of them that are uninhabitable?
If I may speak... When you say uninhabitable...
That you didn't hold it back just for convenience of not having to move people out?
So the capital...
It's just not someplace you want to put...
Absolutely.
What is the need, the real need?
$23 million. That was a result of the capital needs assessment that was conducted initially to determine what are the needs of the property at the current level. That's not applying an escalating factor from the time that that needs assessment was completed.
Question?
Yeah. Will you be... Now, will you be using the trailside homes to move people into there? And do you own trailside homes?
Advanix is a developer of trailside homes, or trailside townhomes. We're also a developer of Sargent Place.
Okay. And so will you be utilizing them locations? Are they under this RAD conversion program at all?
They are not under this bond issuance. They're under a separate part of the conversion, which is moving families away from the single-family scattered sites into another property on a project-based voucher level.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Then we could call for the questions. Do we have a motion and a...
We have a gentleman from...
Oh, okay.
You want me to state my name again and address or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joseph Wampler, 2818 Plum Court. My question is, if we're going to do this, would... Is there any... I think that if it's going to be a quality of life for Kokomo, and I think Jason had a tremendous question, is are we going to keep these guys on staff that are working here? Or are we going to have someone from Evansville responding to a clogged toilet? I think there's some questions there. We need to be, you know... Are we still going to be using the employees that are there now? Are we going to bring some guys in and replace them? I think that's a quality of life issue for the people that have to live in this kind of housing or choose to.
I don't know that we... Mr. President, I don't know that we got to that. We haven't ordered it yet, and we have to pass in support of this, so there'll be more discussion. At the moment, today, we're talking about the resolution, and I'm not sure if that's your question or your question, because I think these people belong and work for the Housing Authority, not for Mr. Martin. This will be a joint venture, my understanding, if I understand this right, and the Housing Authority will still have that obligation. Did I understand it correctly?
I'm sorry I couldn't hear you.
Well, it's a joint venture, and it's not Mr. Martin's call, but the Housing Authority's call, my understanding, relative to the employment of the people you have today, so that that decision is made by you and maybe also by Mr. Martin collectively.
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
Do you have a question?
Hey, Don.
Name an address.
Robert Davis, 114 South Elizabeth Street, Kokomo. I am Vice President, Ask Me Local 2185. I'm sure these questions have already been asked and answered, but for the 12 members that I have that are Union Ping members, I want to make sure that they continue to have employment with a decent wage. We have two years of this contract, I believe, left, and I want to make sure that that continues I know we have some employees that that job has been very good to them. Charles there, he's put two kids through college on that wage. He enjoys his job. They all put their heart and soul into enhancing lives, which is what their slogan is. And I want to make sure that, you know, when we enter into this, that it is, you know, fair to everybody, the taxpayers, the workers, the gentleman over here from Evansville, you know, everybody, all the way around. I want it to benefit the community to the fullest. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one thing to say. This is about, you know, the public housing. We know that this work has to be done, and we're just at a point right now where we're just looking at a bond, and we see that if we can use tax credits...
This is about, you know, the public housing. We know that this work has to be done, and we're just at the point right now where we're just looking at a bond. And we see that if we can use tax credits and help them to do their job that we want to have done, because we want these places to look nice and be up to code and those kind of things, so that's kind of, that's what we're doing today. So it's going to be better for our community if we get started on it. They don't have to get a loan, or they don't have to go out and get a, go to the federal government or the state, and it costs a lot more. So if we help them along, because they're helping us as a partnership, then at that point, after the bond is paid off, then they'll go to a private company to get the bonds for the rest of what they need. So we're just at the place where we're looking at doing a bond right now. And all those other things are certainly important because we certainly want to protect the workers in Kokomo, that the work's done here, and we've had situations that that worked out, and situations where it didn't work out so well. So again, that's where we're at right now. These places are run by the, you know, federal government, we want to provide the housing for these people, and it has to be done, it's just the way that we're going to do it. Thank you.
It, it appears we're ready to call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes that business. We, the next meeting we will have will be August the 10th, okay? And we invite everybody to return to that, we will have some items on the Bureau, the Violations Bureau, here. We'll have the Violations Bureau hopefully on that agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.